May I have a roll call?
You sure can. Melissa Clark, present. Rebecca Haynes.
Present.
Diane Salter.
Here.
Kimberly Smith Colaga.
Here.
Hillary Stokowski.
Here.
Jeff Zelke.
Here.
Dr. Carl Heidrich.
Here.
Jan Meek.
Here.
Carly Stone.
Yes.
Diane Zedan.
Here.
And Lisa Cavalluna.
Here.
Am I missing anyone?
No.
Okay, good.
Thank you. Can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now I'm going to open up for public comments and questions on Agenda Business. Maria, do you see anybody?
I'm looking. Let me see. Do you have any raised hands here?
I do not see any hands raised at this time. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now we're on to Agenda item number five, Planning for the 2021-22 School Year.
Thank you, and good evening. We have a couple of documents. One will be the same PowerPoint that I'm going to show up on the screen after just a few seconds. And then the other handout is the State of Michigan Guidelines for Operating School Safety. And that's a guideline for school districts that we're in a hybrid or virtual situation that are now moving towards in-person learning. So that's an important document that goes with this presentation as well. So I'm going to go present this PowerPoint once Maria gets this running. We can minimize that portion of it. So this is a short presentation, about five minutes, five to seven minutes, and we'll have a little time for questions and answers. But our administrative team has been thinking about what is next year looking like. So that's what this presentation's about.
Is that turned on?
There we go. So back in the summer, we were under these protocols, Return to School Plan. We had an educational roadmap, different phases that you may have heard about, whether we're closed in a certain phase or open in certain things. And we chose a certain phase to keep us open along with virtual options. So we had both virtual options at every grade level, at every building. We had in-person options as well. And we had to have mitigation strategies. We had cleaning, we had social distancing, and masks. So that was the framework that we had going into this school year. Now, they put out a memo about a different guide to operating schools safely that kind of trumps and the original Return to School Plan that we had back in the fall. And so that's that guideline I handed out to you. And we're doing all of those already because it's mixed a lot of the Return to School Plan that we already have in place. So in our original planning, we had to consider all these options here of social distancing, masks. We had to go over all our cleaning routines and all of our quarantine process for quarantined students and staff. And now we have these same considerations that we're looking at in 21-22. Do not necessarily know the rules yet, but we know we're going to have to still have ideas for all these bullet points over here. So within this framework, we believe that we can go back to a pre-pandemic timeframe for schedules and times for school. And so what would that look like? So in our current situation, in preschool, for example, right now we're doing 9:20 a.m. to 3:50 p.m. So that's considered our full day. Next year, we're proposing like it is in 2019-2020 school year. So that's 8:30 a.m. to 3:25 p.m. The same is true for Harvey Swanson, Oakwood Middle School and High School. This is our current start of the day at 9:30 at the elementaries. And our middle school and high school at 7:20 and 7:30. Look at these time differences here, four to four ten. So next year, if we're looking at 2019-2020 times, we would see 8:35 a.m. to 3:30. So as you recall, a couple of years ago before the pandemic or years before, that is what we're working in. And the differences between the current plan and the proposed plan, we still have that double bus run. So we have to have that spacing between the runs. So the gap time there is consistent. The other point, this is a major point, is that when we decided in our Return to Learn Plan, we decided to change the schedules for middle school and high school. So the current schedule we're in right now is a three-block day that alternates between A-Day and B-Day. So these are long blocks of time, as you're well aware of. You have three a day, then you go to the next day, Tuesday, and you have three different classes in the rotation continuous. So the consideration here for next year, we think we go back to that six-hour day like it was before. And that would be both at the middle school and the high school. So we call that the traditional six-hour day. Our current plan has a robust virtual option at every grade level. We have Brandon Learn from Home, which is mainly our synchronous learning, highly qualified Brandon teachers. And then Summit Virtual is more of asynchronous learn. That, we feel in our opinion, should not change. We should still have these options for parents at every grade level in every building. So our virtual options will be like it is today. However, we know that enrollment may not be tied. If parents choose to go in person, so enrollment will be tied. And then finally, in our planning, this calendar that we have, we have 175 days of instruction, 183 teacher days. We're looking at the corresponding calendar, and that's what we negotiated with the union. And so that same corresponding calendar would move forward into next year. And that has us starting the day after Labor Day and ending on June 17, generally how we've had it this year. So if we could summarize all of this, our top priority continues to be staff and student safety across the district. And our schedule times would revert back to 2019-2020. We would continue to have virtual options at every building level. However, we have to be mindful that our plans are subject to change. So if we set the system up like how it was, we know we're going to have plenty of updates from CDC. We're going to have plenty of updates from the Oakland County Health Department and any governor's orders that might have as well. So we ask, as we go through this, to set our plans up for next year, is that we continue to have flexibility and that we know modifications are going to happen and be open to the possibility that we could still have to adjust our schedules and times. So what are the next steps? Our administrative team will continue to work each and every week to put a plan together for the upcoming school year within this framework. I will be sending a letter home to parents on Wednesday, and this will be regarding our intention for 21-22 school year, our calendar, school times, announcing that we'll be reverting back to that sixth period day at middle school and high school, and our thoughts for next school year. As far as our community relations and having the opportunity to talk with parents, we are going to put in a couple of parent virtual meeting dates. And we'd like to do one before spring break and one after spring break, where we can go over this presentation a little further and see if any parents or communities might have some questions that need to be answered. And we're looking forward to next school year.
Thank you very much. It's really, to get some context, I think, helps everybody's minds at this point to, you know, begin to build their thoughts on what it might look like. So thank you very much to you and the team for putting that together and giving it such good consideration. Does anybody here have any questions they'd like to open with?
I sort of have a question. I see that reverting back sounds like really great. What do you see could be the one thing on that item that may be the most difficult to implement? Is it going to be that six-hour day or six hours?
I would say the most difficult portion to implement would be the spacing requirement that we're going to see next year. So what are the mitigation rules and strategies that we're going to see from the state and from the health department? So in this State of Michigan Guidelines for Operating School Safety on page four, it does talk about the possibility that if you cannot do six feet, then what is the distance you can? And so is that three to six feet? So if we, as we go down this pathway, if we have a different set of rules for some of the mitigation strategies, that'll be less intrusive to, right now it is difficult to bring in the whole classroom and space them at six feet in some of our classrooms. So if the rules are a bit different and we go down to three to six feet, then some of those issues will go.
How will that affect, so will busing be an issue then? That's the busing spacing on the buses and possibly having to do, you know, change the times because of more runs or?
That's a really good question. We, right now in our double bus run, we do cleanings every, between the runs. And so we have to examine the times of that and the amount of times it takes to clean between those runs. And that all takes more time. It's part of the reason why there was a decision to move these times further apart or moving the elementary times up to where they are today. As far as spacing on the bus, right now, we are not, we're appropriate. We can do the six-foot spacing on the buses. But however, we can't do that right now and make that commitment six-foot. So by bringing more students onto the bus and onto the bus route, we're going to still have that issue. However, I do believe that we can cut down on the cleaning times between the runs and still be effective.
A question I have is, you know, clearly, with the increase in numbers that we'll most likely, we'll most likely see in fall for face-to-face learning, there may be some who, for a number of reasons, whether it's COVID-related or otherwise, having experienced online, may choose to stay online. Do we have, I know you referenced the remote parent meetings before and after spring break. Is there a timing scheduled for surveying to determine, you know, feedback, what those numbers, realizing everybody could change their mind, but what those numbers initially look like? So if we see we really got one path directing us by those numbers?
Yeah. And so Dave's going to update us on some of that in his presentation this evening, which will be helpful. He's going to talk about some surveying that he did. And to try to get a feel for how many parents want to choose virtual option next year. And he'll come up with some of the data that's interesting because we'll see that a lot of parents are on the fence right now depending on what happens with these protocols and the decisions of the district. However, we're looking at doing a pre-registration. It doesn't commit a parent to a virtual, but it's a pre-registration means this is a possibility for your family and your children. You can back out of it to keep them on the list. So that's the number one question that we have in our administrative team is how many virtual students are we going to ultimately have for next year? Because it will affect, like we're saying, affect the number of in-person kids in the classroom and also in-person kids on the bus.
What is, what's our number now? Do you know percentage-wise, how many are in person?
Yeah, we're about the, we started here with about 30%, now that's, we're in the range of the 20% to 25% now.
At home. Okay.
And how did it go, do you think, this year with our implementing the plan for timing and methodology for changing minds? You know, was that a good approach? Just calling it all out, you know, did that prove, since we were, you know, building it while we were flying, did that prove to be a good approach or is that going to inform what we may or may not do next year?
It was a good approach, and I think that if we just did one change per semester, I think there's been a lot of asks that we couldn't accommodate. So by having the nine-week quarterly changes, we were able to service more kids, more families in their choice that they went in between in-person and virtual. We do not have a quarterly change for this last marking period. We asked that to end at the semester, but we've had one in the first semester and then one in the second.
Right.
It has been helpful.
Okay. I didn't know if it was too much, if that caused, you know, too much rearranging or? Definitely the goal being to accommodate family needs and wishes. Clearly, that's the priority, but?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, good. That's good.
I know if I ask this and it won't happen, are we prepared to go back to all virtual reporting?
Yes, we will be prepared. We can turn the switch pretty quick if we ever had to do that.
Okay. It's almost when Jan says it's going to be a warm winter, it's never.
It's me and the weather.
What, an area that I receive questions on, so I'll go ahead and present it here, is what have we learned in our efforts to address the needs of students who are quarantined, whether they're a positive case or simply quarantined due to close contact for all grades? But I particularly suggest that those that have reached out to me happen to be parents of high schoolers. So I'm sure it's a question across all age groups, but what have we learned about that, given our experience this year to date? And how does that prescribe what we might do in the future?
That's a good question. I think when we have these long quarantines of high school students, there could be, there's a disadvantage there because they move from live instruction to asynchronous instruction. So it's just not the same. And our Brandon Learn from Home virtual kids continually did live instruction, whether they're quarant, you know, quarantine doesn't mean much, right?
Yes, yes.
We talked about that. We bullet pointed some strategies, and I think next year we'll be able to be much better equipped to handle that. And we did talk about a couple of strategies for the spring as well.
Great. I'm glad to hear that. I know that, you know, personally, we experienced in my household and that I've probably received, I don't know, six or seven calls, that are just asking, everybody very kind, just wanting to know how, maybe, you know, with ideas or how it could be improved or whatever, with a level of frustration, but everybody very kind and understanding, but it's all toward improvement. So that's good to hear. I'm glad it's on the radar.
It is on the radar.
Pretty strongly because that's, that's important for sure. You know, hopefully at some point, maybe the science can tell us that quarantines can be decreased or something like that. But when it is potentially two full weeks of school, that can put a lot of stress on little ones, big ones, and everybody in between. So. Does anybody else have questions in the room?
So for the staffing for next year, is that something that you'd kick back out to the staff and see who wanted to do online and who wanted to do face-to-face? Like how, what does that look like?
That is a terrific question, too. I mean, we talked about this a lot. And for right now, we are planning to bring everybody back and set their staffing schedule as if we were in person. And then we're going to have some sort of, we haven't developed yet, some sort of application procedure to move back over to virtual learning and be picked from an application depending on the amount of virtual kids that we have registered.
So this would have to be something, obviously, maybe late this year?
Yeah, probably. We're talking late, at the end of the year and into the summer.
Should we anticipate? I know the district, in my opinion, did a fantastic job of addressing the technology needs when we needed to jump in March. You know, that was quite an effort. But going forward, should the board anticipate any expenses to be presented for technology improvements, given, you know, possibly related to my former question about providing online for quarantine or any other need? Is that a big chunk that we just kind of need to get on our radar?
Yes, it is. It's twofold. One, we're going to have needs every year as we go through handing out one-to-one devices. Jan and I talked about this as well. So now that we have one-to-one devices for everyone, we have to have a replacement schedule for those. And then also, as we look at our technology infrastructure and the end-user devices and our classroom display devices, we could use some upgrades in there. So we're planning on trying to use our funds to upgrade what we can. However, I think the opportunity, if the district looked at the bond scope and increasing the technology amount in there would services long-term if we had a bond in the future. So immediate needs, annual needs, and I'd say on a five-to-eight-year cycle. We just have to find the right pot of money to bless that.
Right, prioritize. Hey, Kim or Melissa, do either of you have any questions you'd like to ask?
I do not. You guys covered it. Thank you.
You covered all my questions I had, so I'm good.
Is there anything else you'd like us to know?
That's all for now. If you have any ideas, just call.
All right, Diane, are you all set?
Yep, I'm good.
Everybody? Okay. Very good. Then I adjourn our special meeting, and we will pick back up with our regular meeting in about five minutes.
I'll be repeating our presentation just a PowerPoint.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
It's helpful to start. If it's still circulating our thoughts, it's a board report.
Kind of get evaluated this year and probably do it. And just to talk briefly, you know, again, I got a couple of the bullet points that I can add on, but that's it. Okay?
I'm glad you mentioned that because I actually have right here. I was going to turn it to you for that moment to review section right on the same.
I actually have the circle because I forgot where it's, there's all this stuff. So our, the lines are really mine.
Perfect. I don't want to know. I'm going to cry because that's what I did. Give us tears.
Can I ask a question? Do you guys sign up for your school buildings' updates? Have there been any, really?
We're updated.
I just went and re-signed up for update for the school buildings because I just got backwards.
Sometimes I don't know why. Because I do sign up for them.
I sign up for them.
I don't get high school.
I've seen a planned school update recently.
Oh, for the district one.
Yeah, for the district one. I was hanging in my daughter's room.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Brandon Board of Education regular school board meeting. May I please have a roll call?
Melissa Clark, present. Rebecca Haynes.
You're muted.
No, I'm not muted. I don't show muted, guys. The host just muted me. Am I, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
I can't hear her either.
It doesn't show me muted, so. Can you hear me now? I can. All right. Kim can hear me. Okay, all right. Can you hear that? Can you hear me?
I could conduct roll call.
Oh, I want to be able to hear them, and I don't know why.
Can you hear us?
Yeah, the sound system is off. Oh, no, it's not. It must have become unplugged. Hold on here. This is when the Castro here was unplugged.
I can hear Kim. So we can have a.
Thank you, Maria.
See what's going on. Did you hear that?
Yes. Can you hear us?
Yeah, we hear you.
Yeah. Thank you. For the record, I think they did that intentionally, Kim, but we'll talk about that later.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Roll call. Melissa Clark, present. Rebecca Haynes. Can you hear me, Rebecca?
I said present.
Okay, sorry. Thank you. Diane Salter.
Here.
Kimberly Smith Colaga.
Here.
Hillary Stokowski. Jeff Zelke. Dr. Carl Heidrich. Jan Meek. Carly Stone. Diane Zedan. Ella Menino. Macy Roberts.
Yeah.
And Lisa Cavalluna.
Good.
Thank you. May we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now we're on to public comments and questions on Agenda Business.
What can you see here? I do not see any hands raised.
Thank you, Maria. And Agenda item number five is our BHS Student Council Report. Macy?
Hi, I'm sorry, my video isn't working, but I'll just talk if that's okay.
Of course.
All right. So for Student Council, currently in the council, we are working on a variety of events to put on for the school and specifically for the senior class. So of these things, they include like Charity Week, which we're going to host throughout the week, selling Brandon masks to try and like promote just a little more school spirit. And hopefully like that will give the teachers just a little something to wear. And then the Star Awards, which is just recognizing like the seniors that are rocking this year. So just like something a little more that will be like broadcasted over the schools to recognize them. And then the Senior Faculty Game, which will be like the senior class against the faculty playing soccer on the football field. We are also teaming up with Woodshop to make picnic tables to go in the courtyard. That way people can have a little more outdoor space on their mask breaks. At the school, winter sports are coming to a close, heading to like districts and states. Our top 10 has been finalized. We still have Homework Club and Future Fridays. Spring sports are going to be starting up next week. They're doing conditioning as of right now. Charity Week will be coming next week along with like spring break to follow. And then personally, like for Student Council, Herbie Martin won the regional student voice. So he will be headed to Student Council States to represent thy school. Lastly, we wanted to propose like the cords. I know we, there's been like some talk about like whether the graduating class would have cords or not this year. So as a part of the senior class, we wanted to request as well as propose like a new role for the cords. Many of us dedicate much of our time to extracurricular activities as well as academics. And on our graduation day, we want to wear these cords to represent everything that we did during our time here as a Brandon Blackhawk. Although much of our senior year has been taken away, this is one thing that would mean a lot to us just to remain as a tradition. And we are willing to listen to any proposals and opinions. But here's a list of the things that we thought deserved to be recognized. This would be the Spanish National Honor Society, Student Council, Link Crew, Wingspan, which is our yearbook, Robotics Band, Your Grade Point Average, the STEM classes, and the Business Professionals of America that are known as BPA. And those are all of those.
Okay. Macy? Yes. Okay, I just got warbly. I wasn't sure if you were still, still with us or not. So we heard your list and we'll be working through Dr. Heidrick to, to discuss that through Mr. Stevens and, and through the whole team. So thank you for raising it so professionally. We appreciate that.
Yes, thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Macy.
Is that all set for your report then, Mace?
Yes, that's everything.
All right. Thank you so much. Really good job. We appreciate all the information and, and insights as to what's going on. Thanks for all your efforts for the senior class and it's much appreciated, I'm sure.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry the slideshow wasn't working.
That's okay. That's how that goes sometimes. Don't worry about it. It's all good. You did a great job. All right. And with that, we're now moving on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Heidrick?
Yes, and we'll start with Mr. Stevens and introducing our new at-risk virtual counselor, Derek Muhammad Ali.
Hi, everybody. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, Dan.
Great to see everybody this evening. I, I, I am happy to report and introduce to you somebody that we came in contact with this summer. This, this, this random guy kind of showed up at our building to Mike Brennan over the summertime and, and wanted to do an internship and was really excited about that in the counseling realm. And we met over the summer and I said, yeah, come on in anytime and, and join us and see what's going on here. Well, when, when I, when I offered him that to just come in anytime, I didn't know that he was going to come in every single day. And, and that goes to the heart of what the, the guy I'm going to introduce Derek Muhammad Ali is all about. He, he has been coming into Brandon High School, you know, every day since basically, not every day, but, but a lot of times since, since August. And he has put his mind to it to be a part of the Brandon School District from the day he walked into my office. He, he dug in, what can I do? How can I do it? He, he started scheduling with us. He started just doing everything that a counselor would do back in August when he didn't deserve, or I shouldn't say deserve, didn't expect anything in return. So there, we, we then had an opening for our behavior interventionist and he was just a logical choice. Derek builds great relationships with people, with kids, with staff. And it was just a no-brainer for me to offer him this job, even though he wasn't on the radar screen to begin with. So that, that, and, and he's just done such an amazing job for us at Brandon High School. And so when this, when this position potentially came open to have a, a counselor to really focus on our, on our alternative ed and our online programming and, and to do some of those things that is really needed at Brandon High School, that maybe our regular counselors and administrators don't necessarily have a chance always to really dig into. Derek was our guy and, and so Derek comes to us with, with a, with a wealth of experience. He, he's got two bachelor's degrees, two master's degrees, probably more education than anybody else in our building. He's got all, all these degrees in psychology and school counseling and mental health and communication. So he's got these four degrees. So anyway, what I'm trying to say is that we, we have found a diamond in the rough here with Derek and to be our new counselor to focus on our alternative ed and online programming, but do a bunch more stuff as well, not just that, but, but really focus on that. And so if you have any questions for him, I just want to introduce him as a great asset to the Brandon School District and to present them to you, the Board of Education.
Thanks, Dan.
Derek, thank you so much for joining us and joining us so early on with your initiative. I've heard about short of tonight's meeting even. And we're so excited to have you as part of the, the Brandon team. Thank you for everything you've done to date and I'm hearing nothing but, but all good things. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity.
Wonderful. Does anybody have any questions for Derek or?
No, I say welcome aboard. You're Blackhawk now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan, for the nice introduction. All right. Now we're moving on to planning for the 2021-22 school year. Handing it over to Dr. Heidrick.
Good evening. Present on our thoughts for the 21-22 school year. So this is, this presentation is about our thoughts for the 2021-22 school year and our planning as administrative team and school district. Want to talk a little bit about the history. We were under the conditions of a return to school plan. That's a program that the state set out for all school districts in Michigan. And we had to develop a plan around an educational roadmap. And look at educational options for the school, including in-person instruction and virtual instruction. And so as we looked at the educational roadmap, we, we had phases where we closed and only virtual instruction and phases where we're in-person and virtual instruction both. With that, we had to cover a lot of issues such as cleaning, mitigation strategies, such as masking and social and, and distance between students. Today, we have new guidelines that have developed for school districts for in-person instruction. We're following all these safety protocols and we continue to evolve and adapt as the rules come out from the state or the Health Department or the CDC. So we're in very good shape with our planning today. So with our current plan, we have these issues that have come up, social distancing, masks, cleaning and quarantine of students and staff. And in our proposed school plan for next year, we're still going to have these same issues. We just do not know what the ground rules are yet for next year because they haven't been established by the state or the Health Department or the CDC at this point. But we know we're going to have to have considerations for social distancing. We've got all the mask rules. We know we're going to have to have cleaning and quarantine situations. So our thought is to work within the framework that we have and to go back to our traditional times and schedules. And that would include our preschool all the way through K through 12 at our buildings of elementary, the middle school, and the high school. So our proposal is, for this example, is to run a schedule like we would for the 2019-20 school year on the right-hand side. So increasing the full day from 9:20 to 3:50, 8:30 to 3:25. So we're adjusting those times back the way they were. And the same is true with Harvey Swanson, Oakwood Middle School and the high school. So as you see, these later elementary times would revert back to the traditional times that you'd see in the 2018-2020 school year. And then in our planning, we're looking at changing, switching back to a traditional six-hour day in middle school and a six-hour day in high school. Currently, we're in block scheduling. It's alternating block. It's a three-hour, three-block system. We have three long period classes on one, one day and the next day changes to three different classes with the same amount of time for each block. So that would go back to six-hour day traditional middle school, six-hour day traditional high school like 2019-20. And in our current plan, we have a robust virtual option at every grade level and at every building. And we have Brandon Learn From Home, which is synchronous learning with very highly qualified Brandon staff. And we have Summit Virtual Programming that's asynchronous learning generally. That, these are options that parents could choose for their children. Next year, we still want to have those robust, robust options at every grade level. So we've continued with Brandon Learn From Home as an option for parents at every building and also continue with Summit Virtual as an opportunity for parents as well. We anticipate a lower enrollment in those areas for next year, but we still want to have them and have that as a viable option for every parent in the district. And then the calendar, very similar to what we have this year, starting after Labor Day and ending June 17. So we're going to run a corresponding calendar, which would be the same, would start after the Labor Day and then end in mid-June. No changes there. So if we summarize some bold points, our, our, our mission is still staff and student safety is a number one priority for the district. To summarize, that our schedules and times would revert to the 2019-20 schedule. We'll have virtual options available to families. However, we, we know that these plans could change based on the conditions at the time. So we want to be flexible and open the idea that we could get updates from the CDC, updates from Oakwood County Health Department, or governor's orders that may change our, our thoughts a bit. However, we still think within the framework, we can still operate with the times and schedules that were presented for next school year. And in closing, our next steps include our administrative team to continue each week to prepare for the 21-22 school year. And I will be sending a letter home to parents on Wednesday outlining our changes for next year, school times, calendars, announcing that the middle school and high school will be going back to a six-hour day and just our general thoughts for next year. In that letter, we'll also have a couple of parent virtual meeting dates that will be, one will be scheduled before spring break and one will be scheduled after spring break so that parents can see the updates and offer an opportunity for parents to ask questions and a question to answer for. That's our finding and thinking at this point in time for 21-22 school year.
Thank you very much. Where will the notices be published for those parent meetings?
I'm going to put those in the letter and then we'll put them on the front page of the website as well.
Perfect. Thank you very much. All right, now we'll move on to the virtual school presentation by David Wyatt. Mr. Wyatt?
Good evening, everybody. How are you today?
Good.
Good. All right. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen with you. Okay, can everybody see kind of that presentation, at least the front page there?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So here at the end of the first semester, I had sent out a survey to our parents and families, those that were still staying with Brandon Learn From Home, those that were new to Brandon Learn From Home, or those that had decided to move back to in-person just to get engaged to see half the school year is over, how have things gone? And so that is what I'm going to share with you this evening, those results and ultimately kind of where we stand and how we are making decisions based off of those survey results as we move forward into next year. So looking at the folks that had submitted, majority of those that did submit on that survey were Brandon Learn From Home parents, primarily at the elementary level, which isn't much of a surprise considering that that is where most of our students currently are within the program. A few things that definitely stand out to us as we shuffle through these results are the amount of undecideds. So you can see, one of the questions that parents had to kind of choose from was if this option was available for next school year, either Brandon Learn From Home or Summit Virtual, is this something you would consider for your family? And although we had a large amount of folks that did say yes, we do have a large amount that stated undecided. And some of those come down to those guidelines that, you know, Dr. Heidrick had just talked about, as well as other things that are still kind of just unknown as we continue to navigate this year and get ready for next year. But the one thing that we're extremely proud of is that truly overnight, we created a monster, but in a good way. And what I mean by that is, is that we have a viable, great program that happened from the ground up. And it's a program that people talk about. I, I like to say that it's like this, this homegrown program to where it's well-known within the community and it's highly regarded. A lot of times when we send out surveys, I always get nervous because I want the feedback, both good and bad. But let's be honest, we don't always like to see all the negative things that maybe come back. We were very pleasantly surprised to see that overwhelmingly, the responses that we received were not negative. They were in high regards to the program, no matter what families either chose to do this school year or as they look into next year. They felt that their students had received an extremely high-quality education and they were proud to be part of that program. And you'll see as we go through these next couple of slides, some of their testimonials to where they felt that a family and a culture had emerged online, which truly I thought was going to be one of our toughest obstacles because online is different. You don't necessarily have all that touchy-feely like you can in person, whether you have COVID or not. And I was worried, you know, are we going to have teachers just acting like robots? And how is this going to feel and how are these interactions? And that hasn't been the case at all. It's actually turned into this really cool opportunity for our teachers and our students and families to work together and in many ways customize an education but from their own, sometimes kitchen tables or their bedrooms or, you know, their, their dens, wherever it is that they're deciding to do their schoolwork from. So from the results, these were some things that came out of, you know, from the parents with Summit Virtual, things that they liked, things that they asked for suggestions for changes we had into next year. So they like the idea that you can work at your own pace, that it has maximum flexibility. Also that they have the ease of the access to classes. They don't necessarily have to worry about a live Zoom and window log on. They can do it kind of this idea anytime, anyplace, anypace. They also really like all of the electives that come with Summit Virtual and the hybrid opportunities for students to either be part-time Summit Virtual, part-time in-person, or even part-time Summit Virtual and part-time Brandon Learn From Home. For Brandon Learn From Home, one of the number one things that really parents have continued to brag about is that on this platform, they love that interaction and that engagement that is live with not only the teacher, but also with their child's peers. And it's this idea that even though they're at home learning remotely, it's the exact same feeling, the exact same structure of what they would be getting inside of a brick and mortar building, except instead of sitting at a student desk, they're just sitting at home. And so that has been something that parents and community members have grown to love about the program. Something else that continues to come up is this idea of greater communication between the school, the teachers and the parents, and this idea of less stress, better grades. So don't get me wrong, we do have some students who are struggling like we would in any platform, but we do have a large amount of students who are actually excelling on this platform. And for their parents and for those students, they feel that there are less distractions at home. Yes, they might have little brother or sister running around. That's a different type of distraction than having your, your buddies or whatever else that maybe are kind of that negative peer influence. They're away from that. And it's easier for them to be focused on their academics, focused on their homework, focused on their classes than to be, you know, taking a hall pass to wander, whatever the case might be. We've seen an increase in students who have been successful on this program. We've seen an increase in students who have been successful on this program, who typically maybe in a traditional school setting had not fared too well in the past. The other thing is especially for elementary families, this is a big one, the partnership with the families. So I always like to joke with our teachers when we have our PDs that they're always in the spotlight. And that's true, because just like here, we have, you know, we're welcoming people into our homes. The teachers are doing the same, not just for the kids, but in many cases for their parents, for their loved ones, for their grandparents, who are sitting right there with them, working with them. And so this has been something that in the beginning was a little nerve-wracking, but overall it's turned into an amazing partnership and really a family culture that's emerged, because we have parents working with the teachers and they're helping to coach their kid at home, while the teacher is taking that kind of lead role. And that there's been just some amazing opportunities that have blossomed from this. The last thing is, and this has come up quite a bit, parents are really happy that this has offered their students an opportunity for real-world technology skills. And I've been hearing that more and more. I think we've always known that computers and, and virtual and all these other things play that role. But now that parents are doing this themselves because of their work, or just because they're seeing this with their child, they're also realizing, understanding the great impact that that can have for their family as well as their child as they continue to advance in their educational careers, or potentially a career path beyond just, you know, high school and college. So these are some testimonials that have come up. These were just some of the top ones. We had tons and tons of different testimonials. These are just some of the ones that really stuck out that I threw onto this PowerPoint for us. But you'll see that the overall theme is exactly what I just discussed. The idea of maximum flexibility within the program. It's structured like a traditional school day, yet we get to do it right from home. We have these breaks in, in between classes. It just makes it to where a family are able to do different things from their home. Also this idea that you have control over your learning and that, you know, your kids are comfortable and safe at home with, you know, many parents have said greater communication. This one here, I'm not going to read the, the whole quote here, but what this parent in a nutshell is saying is that they chose Brandon Learn From Home this year because of some fears of COVID. And they didn't really anticipate that the program was going to be amazing. They thought it was going to be good. They figured a great opportunity, given the times. This family now is truly in a bind. They don't know what to do next year, because some of the things that they were worried about, their children actually excelled in. So for an example, the, this, this parent showed or discussed that, you know, she, she can see the learning happening. Why? Because she's with her daughter. She also sees that there's less distractions at times of what she observed as a parent or her child had come home and shared with her that was happening in the, in the buildings. She also talked about how even at the middle school level, that her daughter is extremely excited to be part of this program, because she has really outstanding teachers that are taking those extra steps and times that are built into the program to work with and make sure that she's caught up and that she's able to be successful. And so now we have a family, one of these undecideds, that it's not because of COVID anymore. It's because they're seeing great things happening. They already knew the great things were going on in the buildings, but now they're saying, wow, these things are actually happening at home too. Maybe my child doesn't have to go back to school in a traditional sense. So we've started to change ideals within the district. And what I really like about this, like I said, kind of overnight, we created a monster to compete with some of the schools that otherwise in times past, we've lost students too for those same reasons. We're in the game and that's what I like about it. That's the competitor in me, that's excited about the opportunities we now have for our own students within the district. We also have a little excerpt here from Tina Luchow, I think many of you know her, an outstanding elementary teacher. And in, I had asked some of the staff for testimonials and she was one of the first ones. I don't even think I had finished hitting send on my email and she had sent me something back that, you know, I just want to share how much I love this opportunity. And, and her whole experience with this is this idea of a sense of family. She shared something with me early on that I'll always carry with me until the day I retire. She had said, you know, Dave, I, I've worked in buildings for years and I love teaching. I would never change my job. She said, I feel like for the first time in a long time, I actually have true connections with kids. All of those little distractions like the PA coming on, or somebody knocking on your door, or just, you know, telling somebody to sit down, they're gone online. And she said, I can focus on kids. I can focus on the curriculum. And she said, you know, Dave, this, this has by far been one of my most favorite years ever. And it's funny, because I remember when myself and Koi Stewart approached her about doing online, it, it took her a whole weekend and almost a half to commit to doing it, because she was worried about many of the things that she actually has found joy in. So it's just kind of ironic. So as we look into the opportunities for next year, what we're going to do is, is we're going to put everything under the umbrella of Brandon Learn From Home. That's the namesake. That's the staple within our district that folks seem to be drawn to. Summit Virtual will still play a role, but it's just going to play a role within Brandon Learn From Home. So if you want real-time learning or that synchronous learning, like what's going on in person, you would choose the Brandon Learn From Home option. If you want some increased flexibility or anytime learning, because let's say that you are on a travel hockey team and it's, it's really tough for you because of practice schedules, whatever the case is, to be part of all of those Zoom meetings, we can also do anytime learning. We're just keeping that Summit Virtual there as a name place, because we've had it out there now for two years advertising it. So that's where it is, but it's going to be housed within Brandon Learn From Home. The other big piece that we've been working on is trying to communicate and bring back many of our homeschool families that have been within the district or surrounding districts. And so we're trying to create and continue these shared partnership opportunities for our families and our students to come back to Brandon. And so maybe they still have reservations about in-person for a variety of reasons. Can we partner with them online? Absolutely we can. Many of them, as I've begun to communicate with them, are excited for these opportunities and having a teacher help them or having a platform help them. And in many cases, it's free. It's not on their, on their backs anymore. So they are very open and welcoming to this idea. Hopefully we'll continue to increase that as we go. The other thing that we're going to do is make sure that we increase those supports and services. We did a really nice job this year, but there's always room for improvement in that area. And then also looking to increase more hybrid opportunities and options for our students, especially those that are looking to do some more opportunities in person. Can they have a split schedule between online and in-person? And providing those opportunities, almost similar to what many college campuses have done over the last five to 10 years. Bottom line is, the world changed in unimaginable ways in 2020. What was great about our school district, we changed with it. We didn't just say, nope, we have one option and that's it for kids. We had three outstanding opportunities for children to learn. You could go back to in-person if that's what you chose to do. You could do Brandon Learn From Home, or you could do Summit Virtual, whatever was best for your family. And it's exciting and encouraging that we're going to continue to offer that as we head into next school year and hopefully beyond. So our priorities are to always continue to deliver the highest quality education for all of our learners, no matter what their family chooses to do. And last but not least, is always to continue to be innovators and at the forefront of educational excellence. And in all honesty, we are really rewriting the script of what remote online learning looks like. It's amazing to me, and I said this before, and I'll just take the opportunity to brag. We're new to the game when it comes to online learning, although I find it ironic that some of our competitors are starting to ask us what it is that we're doing, because they're hearing great things about the program. So we're rewriting the script. We're challenging them now. And that's a great opportunity for us and our families. So this is what the structure and the options will look like for next school year. For JK through five, we would have the Brandon Learn From Home option. There is a Summit Virtual option available to them. Part of Summit Virtual for next year, there will be kind of a interview process for that program, just to ensure that the students and the parents understand what they're getting into. They don't always have those same supports available to them as what a learn-from-home child would. So we want to make sure that they are aware of that. We want to make sure that they maybe have some experience in the past of doing online learning and being successful on their own as independent learners. So those options will be there, but they are going to be at least a conversation had to ensure that that's the best option for them. And then for our secondary students, middle school and high school, Learn From Home option, exactly what it looked like this year, our Summit Virtual option, and then our hybrid options, where we can start combining the two or even combining online with in-person some more. And then our whole goal is what I call these four corners. And it's a shared partnership, no matter if you do Learn From Home or if you do Summit Virtual, everything is a shared partnership between the school, the students, the teachers and their parents. And so that's our platform. That's what we went into this school year. That's what we'll continue to do. Continue to modify, continue to improve, but overall, continue to give outstanding opportunities to our parents and to our students as we did this school year. So we've already started an aggressive marketing campaign online through social media and we'll continue to enhance it as we go. Pre-enrollment has kind of, I guess you say unofficially open, although it's already, we have several parents and students that have signed up. And that's going to go now through August to where we'll close those down and make sure that we have time for staffing and course selections and finalizing of those things. And then just as Dr. Heinrich said, I know this came up in earlier meeting, that our staffing timeline will all be based around enrollment numbers. So the more numbers that we have, the more staff will need, vice versa. And so with all of that being said, I guess what questions do you have for myself or for the administrative team that's sitting here?
I, I have a moment if it's okay.
I actually just have more of a statement. Excellent presentation.
Yes.
I was, I'm very proud of all the work that the virtual team here has done and the parents and the kids. I, I learned a lot about how it differs between the two programs and now seeing with the parents' input, again, I'm just saying proud and excellent on the presentation. And then just a little sidebar, I happen to notice if anybody's really listening out there. If you guys go, gals, parents, people, go to the Brandon School website, you will see the teachers that are there teaching virtually and they're recognized. I saw the link there. I saw Ms. Luchow's name, Ms. Goodlow, and your names that I recognized. And it's just, you go see the, what is it, 12th date that you have, teachers?
Yes.
So that's, that was very neat to see too, but that's just my comments.
Melissa, do you have something?
I just wanted to just reiterate kind of Diane said, but Dave, you know, where credit where the credit's due. I know personally Dave has put blood, sweat and tears into this program from the summertime. So I know that you said thanks to the entire staff, but I also just want to give you kudos, because you have never stopped and you've gone 110% and that needs to be recognized. So I just want to recognize you at this meeting and saying thank you for putting all of your dedication and time away from your family and everything to get this ball rolling and to make us, you know, one of the forefronts and redesigning the online experience. So thank you.
Thanks Melissa, I really appreciate it. I'll take the credit where the credit's due, but in all honesty, it's all the teachers. I'm just the guy behind the curtain. Our teachers, we, we just have so amazing teachers that have stepped up to the plate and it has been nothing but home runs. So truly it's, it's because of them. It really is.
I'd like to jump in here. I just want to say a couple of things, piggybacking off of both Diane and Melissa. The Brandon Learn From Home site looks amazing. It's, it's great. It's got everything you need. It's easy to find. I love it. I think it is so smart to have the conversation with parents for those junior kindergarten through grade five to understand fully Summit Virtual. And I think that decision that you made to have that in place reflects really listening to feedback. And I just want to say kudos. That's great. The one question I have, um, because I want to see this get marketed out there. I want to see this go. You said earlier, you're a little competitive. I'm a little competitive too. I'd like to see this, I'd like to see this blow up. Have you, have you considered accreditation at all? Is that, do you think that's a need? Do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, so a lot of the different things, I mean, what's nice about the way it's so like, for an example, Learn From Home platform, I mean, really everything that's on there is exactly like what we already have accredited or whatever the case is, right within the high school or middle school, or so the high school, because that's where all the credits are housed and whatnot. Summit Virtual, I, I will say this, yes, at time that platform can be very difficult to navigate for, for many students and parents. But the opportunities that are there, especially in the AP realm, oh my goodness, the sky's the limit. So what's nice about those courses is that they already are accredited through College Board. And so the kids, just like if they're taking a class through, you know, Brandon High School, yes, it's not a Brandon teacher person on the other end. However, those are all a College Board approved. And so if they take that course, they're successful and then they take that test in May, the AP test, they still can earn that credit towards a college or, you know, whatever institution is that they're looking to go. So many of them already are, there are definitely some that we could look into to, you know, maybe that are just unique for online, where it makes sense to just do an online program and it wouldn't be something we do in person. Absolutely. We've talked about some programming or even web design style classes. It's online. Makes sense. Why wouldn't we do those? So absolutely, I agree with you. I think the sky's the limit. And I, I'm all about breathing down the necks of some of the bigger districts and letting them feel our heat for once. It's, it's a good time.
Well, and I'll, I'll round it out by saying, unless anybody else has any, I'll round it out by saying that, you know, in the summer, well, starting in the spring, right, through summer, early fall, we're, we're all sweating it, right? We're as administration, the team, the board, everybody's trying to figure out the, what is best for our community, what's best for our kids. And we ended up making decisions that created a, proved that we were an outlier, if you will, in our area. We made choices that were difficult to make, but felt deeply they were the right choices. And at the end of the day, we threw this huge call to action out there for our entire district. And from the perspective of Brandon Learn From Home, your initiative, the team's initiative, our staff, our teachers, but really, Mr. Wyatt, under your leadership and your attention to things that were moving as you were trying to pay attention to them and probably couldn't even formulate a framework for your thoughts sometimes to have the vision. In leadership, we, we appreciate it. We're honored and we're very proud. So thank you to everyone.
Thank you again, everybody. I really appreciate it. Please continue, share with me, you know, as, as we continue throughout the school year, your thoughts or things that you're hearing. You know, we can only get better, so.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is, is our approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion?
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approved the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Thank you. May I have a roll call?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zoki?
Yes.
Lisa Cavallino?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next item on our agenda is our information and discussion items. And the first information item for discussion is the bond presentation by Dr. Hydrick.
Listen, you have a copy of this presentation. We'll take the presentation on the screen. Well, this evening I want to talk to you about the potential for a new bond someday in the district. As soon as Maria puts that up on the screen, we'll get started. Let's see, it's... I might have to move it to the front of your front, you might have to pull that up. If you go back to the... Back to Google Drive and put that on the front screen. Wherever it's at.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Do you have an extra one of those? I have two of the other one and I'll have that one.
I have.
I'm going to...
What do you have to find my gather? Sorry, I'm sharing.
Yeah, it is.
All right.
Yes.
Now that's the...
Thank you.
Go to Google.
Thank you.
I seen it there a second ago.
Yeah, it is here. One of...
That's the PDF though, isn't it?
Yeah, it should still.
Or go to slides. Can you go to slides?
A few minutes here.
Okay, we'll get there.
It's okay. All right, let's do my share from here.
Yeah, try to, try to go to slides. Google slides.
In here? Yes.
There it is. We can work off that. Unless you can.
I don't know why I, I should be able to share that because it is open.
We got to find a. You go back out to your Gmail or your Google Docs.
Okay.
That will find the Google slides there somewhere. Not driving. Slides should be down.
Oh, it's on the slides?
Yeah, it's on the slides.
Okay. I should be able to get it from here.
And Dr. Heidrich, if I understand this, they can't see it. Is that the issue?
Yeah, I think we're.
So people know that we're right, what we're looking at.
Yeah.
Okay. There it is. Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. All right.
Yep. Okay, great.
Thank you, Maria.
Thanks, Maria.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we're going to talk about our bond presentation. I'm sorry.
Just saying currently it's not shared.
Oh, it's not?
Yeah, we got to wait for that.
Oh, boy.
Just minimize that one. And then go share and then keep that up though.
Yeah, I, I don't know why it's not though.
So I.
It should.
So I would click on the tab with the presentation on the top. Up there Maria, keep going up. Yep, to the right. Yep, there you go. Click on that. And then if I review, I click on the window of the Zoom meeting. You can see, I think that's Melissa later. You can click on that. And open that up. Sit on the bottom right of that little window. There you go. You can do your share screen and you should be able to find. You can go to that Google on you.
Should be right here. Yeah. Let's see. I did that. Yes, I can.
Teamwork, right?
That's right. I'll take a couple minutes here.
And then we'll do the share screen one more time. And if you see it, um, you have to start as basic. There's something up there. See where it says bio? I'm wondering if people.
First one?
Okay, there you go. See it? It should be open. It's one of your tabs.
And I would, I'm going to guess it's the one that says Google Drive. Do you?
Yeah, we did a practice run earlier.
Go to the left, I think. Try that. I think it's going to be one of those tabs on the screen. Yep. And so if you, of course that bar is sitting right there on the top, right? I mean, can you see that? You can slide that far off the way. There you go. They're both there. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Do you guys see it?
You see it, Melissa? Kim?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
There we go. Sounds good. Thanks, Maria.
Oh, you're welcome.
Okay, bond presentation to look at options, future options for the district. Just from, from a history standpoint, we had a bond in 2006. That was the last bond to pass. Recently, we had an August 2018 signing bond. It was two mills for two years. And that did not pass. And the most recent one would be March 2020. That was point eight three mill increase for a 20-year period. And that did not pass by a very small margin. In the past several years, we've also had many refunding of existing bond opportunities. And this latest one we just did last month, it's up and coming for May, a board approval. And that has, over the course of time, have saved the district several million dollars. And including this last refunding is predicted to save between $800,000 and $9 million for refunding of a existing bond. Okay, I froze in here. I have to skip that there. We're not having. There we go. All right. So the district has an opportunity to go offer a bond again. And that potential could start as early as November of 2021, so next November 2021, to potentially put a, a bond on the ballot. Our bonding has restructured quite a bit since the last point eight three increase. So now a new bond for roughly the same amount of money, about $20 million would have a no increase in the existing mileage rate. So existing mileage rate is 12.13. So a new bond for the same amount of money generated would have a no mill increase. So that's good news for the district that we can run a bond with a no increase in the future. So this, two graphs show the projections of, of the bond throughout time. If we did not do any bond, this is the graph we look at. So let me start by explaining that a little bit. So here's the year 2021 and this is the 12.13. And so it's very consistent across the board. But look at our bonding capacity after the year 2030. We have a glide path downward, pretty steep. And then the bond currently scheduled to be paid off at 2035. So if we add a, a new bond for approximately the $20 million, we would have a no, no mill increase. And so you can see this over here, very similar to this point here. The black line is what we concentrate on. There is no increase in these years like there is this year. So that's why we can call it a no mill increase. However, we do pay for this on the backend a bit. So we're in the school bond loan revolving fund. And we can borrow from the state in the yellow to repay it in the pink in these years. And then you can see a few of these years here, how this changes the bond structure out here a bit. So, but with a 20 million no mill increase bond, we would be out here about two more years than we are currently with no, as far as payment for restructuring. So the last bond scope that was developed, we have a very solid foundation for that. In general, it had items such as technology, securities, remodeling, in particular Harvey Swanson, a lot of funds devoted to Harvey Swanson for remodeling, roofs and parking lots at every building, athletic upgrades, playgrounds, et cetera. There was some community money as well, or community facilities. And so it was a well drawn scope. And it's, it's got a good solid foundation for today. However, costs are rising and with the rising costs means that our bond scope will exceed our needs. So where we had the $19 million bond last time, if you price out the same amount of upgrades, that's, it's more expensive today. And so generating a new bond and no mill increases for 20 million, our needs are greater than that 20 million currently. What's a little bit different in the bond scope that I've noticed is that the technology funds were pretty minimal in the last bond scope, knowing what we're going through with all our technology needs today, that they recommend to increase the technology portion of that bond scope if that future bond develops. And then if we're going down a pathway of a future bond some, someday, then the school district and community, we should review that graph scope, make some tweaks to it, develop a priority list for that, for that bond scope. There's a, there's another option here I want to, want to talk to you about. I guess the first key point is, is the no mill increase in the amount of money we can get. But there's something difference between a one series bond and a two series bond. And I want to explain that a bit more. Last time you did a one series bond, so you got all the money upfront, the mileage it filled. And you had a spin down plan of four years. So you prioritize, prioritize all your projects within a four-year, four-year period, and then the money is, is gone and you're done with the project. In a two series bond, you can restructure the bond a little bit differently or consider restructuring the bond a little differently. You can get the, the funding in two different portions. In, in this example, in series one, you could do 15 million for the first four years and prioritize projects. And then the second series could come in four years later and you could do five million four years later. So there's a couple advantages that's different than the one series and that you could prioritize your projects for a total of eight years. And more so in the first four years with the renovations. And then lineup projects for the second four years to continue the pathway of basically eight to nine years of, of good projects, of priority of projects for the district. Additionally, if you put tech money in both series, you're going to develop an eight-year technology plan for the district that would have technology money, some in the 15 million and some in the 5 million. And so you'd have a pathway for technology needs in the district, district for a very long time. So back to that graph, it's the same graph that you looked at before. And I just want to just talk about the series. So if we went out for the one series bond, this is the 20 million in these years right here, these first four years. Then your bond structure is over with. In a two series bond, if, if that was a direction to go, here's your first four years at 15 million and then here's your next four years at 5 million. And then that gets the district out there a bit in prioritizations of projects and prioritization of technology. And then 10 years from now, if we look at the district, the bonding, bonding capacity increases dramatically and the mills are reduced. And so this bonding capacity in 10 years really looks good for the district because there's a lot more room to go out for a bond. So in summary, on this is if you have the right structures in place for the bond and look at the priorities over time, this is a opportunity to do a 10, eight to 10-year plan for the district until this bonding capacity returns in 2021. Just to summarize some of these bullet points, you can place the new bond on ballot as soon as November 2021. However, if the board needs more time, it could be May of 2022, it could be November of 2022, or even further out, what the board would have to decide on when the appropriate time is to, to go for a bond. New bond was at this point, the way it's structured, has a no mileage increase. And the discussion on whether to take, look at a bond in one series or two series and look at the prioritization structures of both of those and look at a long range plan. And then depending on the timing of the bond, most definitely a community input on the scope, parent input on the scope and administrator and Board of Education input in the scope to make sure it's revised and updated, refreshed with the latest numbers. And again, that's, that's just a look at the bond options.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions at this time?
Yeah, I got a, I forgot already. What was the bond amount that we would have gotten off that the last, was it about 20 million?
Nineteen.
Okay, a little less. Nineteen, that's what I thought.
And actually the proceeds will be closer to 19 with the 20 million.
Yeah, yeah. So the 20 million that we're looking at now is dependent on the refunding that we do in May. So that could fluctuate, could be a little bit more, it could be a little bit less. And we're not sure on that exact amount yet, but the thought would be that we can maximize that amount based on no mill increases depending on what that amount refunding does to the total.
Exact, exactly. And then for the two, what is it, two steps?
Series.
Two series. Do you have to have your list for the five, for the second part of it?
Second tranche, yeah, yeah.
Or can you sort of have some flexibility with it depending what happens in the first four years?
You do have some flexibility depending on what, what happens in the first year, four, four years. But however, when we go to treasury to get it approved, we, we need to have our list defined enough that they see that we're using the 15 million in the first series and 5 million in the second series dedicated to projects.
And if you change it, go back to treasury for approval?
You, you could go back to treasury, but the way that, way it's written up, we should have enough flexibility to
Flexit.
Move that around a little bit.
So it needs to be accurate but expansive enough with built-in flexibility. So that, because as I recall, it's, it's your best foot forward to make sure you're covered. Okay. What, um, what kind of timing from a project management standpoint are we looking at? If we wish to move forward with a, a November bond versus, you know, subsequent opportunities, because that, that in and of itself may, may drive some of the group's decision. So what would you suggest is the, are the different tranches of time and deadlines that we're facing?
So, so our, our deadline's upcoming for, you're still on track for a November ballot if we choose to go that, that direction. However, we do have to be organized enough to get to treasury no later than the first week of July for the final approval. And so we'd also have to approve that as a Board of Education, no late, in advance of the treasury. So if we go down that pathway, then we'd be consulting our, our bond attorney to develop the schedule for the spring. My recommendation, if we do go down that pathway for November, that we work on a community survey in April and work on community forums to review the scope of, of the bond and work through the facilities committee to work on that scope of the bond. And then that's be packaged up in late May and early June into a report and an application for treasury approval, no later than early July. And if we meet those deadlines, then we'll be on the ballot for November. And then after a small summer break, the district will continue its special campaign all the way up to the election day with a variety of forums and information. And the other part of that is community campaigns as well that run parallel to that. So going out to a different date, in May, you have more time.
Right.
And certainly if it's November 2022, you have plenty of time.
Please wait. Do we lose the opportunity of this zero mileage increase?
That's debatable. We, I don't think we will lose the opportunity of a, of a no mill increase. However, I don't, not sure the pot's going to, total sum of money may fluctuate depending on interest rates and our refunding opportunity. Right now, it looks like it's pretty solid to be in that range. But if we had an increase in the yields and increase in these interest rates, then that may be a different story. I don't know if you want to add to that, Diane?
Yeah, the only other thing is, um, we know that cost, construction costs and the like continue to increase. So that would be a downside.
Is there any benefits of waiting until May or aside from the time?
Um. Yeah, I mean, districts choose to do November. Yeah, I mean, districts choose to do November and May elections. Some have done the August, can't do the March anymore. We, there's no necessarily downside, but again, we just priced out construction costs that are increasing. It does allow you to have more time, if you need more time, if you don't need more time to make a decision. But we're here to support the board and the school district for whatever pathway that you choose, if you pursue a new bond.
If we decided to do November, what's the soonest projects can start if it passes? I mean, or might start to line up projects?
Well, that is, that's an interesting question. So if you do November, then the architect has to be organized and ready to go right away. And some of that, you may not get that much done in the first summer, unless we're extremely organized and the architect's ready to go and we get out the bid in time in all the various bidding areas of construction. And then, we would have to generally stay on target with that. But the Walker work should be done the following summer if we don't meet that.
If only summer means summer of 2022, if we wait
2023.
2023.
Yes.
And if we wait till May of 2022 to vote on this, and it passes, we're still, we add at least, I mean, it's hard, maybe 2024, mainly because some of the projects would probably better require an empty school building, you know.
We live in Michigan.
Yeah, we live in Michigan, yeah, exactly. We live in Michigan, and you just can't go redoing classrooms when the kids are sitting there, so.
Yeah, so that's a good question. So the timing of it is, could be interesting. The November has a higher chance to meet that summer obligation.
I have to say, I'm very open-minded to this, very open-minded. The two series has really got me interested. When I look at that chart, which has been a while since we've seen how the rates are looking and seeing that we would have eight years, you know, of hopefully being able to upkeep things and improve it, some facilities. And then, all of a sudden, 10 years from now, we are just, like I say, it drops way down to like four or five mills. And what a difference that'll be. And then, four, five, six years later, we're zero mills. So, I mean, it's just, I find it very intriguing, and I'm very open-minded to it.
Melissa, or Kim, do either of you have any questions or comments?
Not at this time. I'm intrigued by it, so I'm going to marinate it for a little bit. Nothing here.
Okay. Thank you very much. Well, I've got some further thoughts in kind of figuring out next steps and guidance. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Very, very helpful. I appreciate the considering the two-series idea. It's also very intriguing, seems to be the word of the night, intriguing. All right. And with that, we are moving on to the Board of Education report. I'm happy to open with the fact that we have executed the new contract with Dr. Heidrick. Very excited about that, as the board had voted and approved for. So there's something about that, I don't know, maybe it's the lawyer in me getting a sign. Just feels good. So very glad to record that. And with that new contract, we are also excited to be able to undertake the evaluation process, which Diane is going to speak to now.
Yeah, every year, the job of the school board is to evaluate the superintendent. He's our only, or he's our only employee. We are starting that process technically tonight. I know there's been some talk, but Dr. Heidrick knows he's getting it evaluated December. We are using the MASP, we've used it every year that I've been here. That will be our tool in just setting up the standards and have an understanding of what he expects from us and vice versa and things like that. But this, we're just going to start the process on evaluating and keeping this district moving forward, so.
Thank you. The other item on our Board of Education report is basically just a shout-out. In our first few months here, we have, well, the whole year, we've had things to attend to, right? Unique things to attend to. And then, with our new board hitting the ground running in January, I am beyond excited. Whenever I place a call, the calls that I receive from everyone going both ways, the communication that we have on this board, the initiative that I see everybody taking as new members of the level of curiosity, trying to satisfy that curiosity, jumping in and helping, can I do this? Would you mind if we took this approach? You know, full-on conversations, initiatives. Again, call to action to me from all of you, which I love. And from me to you, it is off to a fantastic start this year, and I just wanted to express the appreciation and excitement I have over this team, so.
Can I piggyback on that, too? I did, only just, I say, Lisa and I go back, nine years or whatever. Absolutely, I was, I'm so excited, every one of you, the conversations I've had and our talk. I think I've been so appreciative. It's been, it's been really refreshing, seriously. You guys, gals want to learn, I mean, just appreciate it. All the input that we're getting so far, I'm excited also.
Thank you.
Feeling mutual.
I feel pretty fortunate to be on this board because, you know, great leadership, so.
Thank you, but we appreciate you, please know that. We see all good things. I love the conversations we have, I love being told when I'm wrong. I do, I love it, it's the best. Because then it always leads to a really good conversation. And so, I like, I really like what we have going on, thank you. And so that is all for my, for the Board of Education report. Tonight, we're moving on now to the Finance Report with Jan.
Good evening, it's nice to be back in person.
Isn't it?
Yeah, it really is. Tonight, I just want to briefly update you on the budget development process as we work toward the adoption of the 2122 budget in June. One of the challenges this year, unlike other years, is that we currently in the 2021 budget have received 1,350,922 in federal money. So the challenge is, will that be replaced next year? Will we have more of the same for less? And that's where we're at. So I just wanted to update you right now. We'll be getting a supplemental, it's called ESR, it's a title, like a Title I-type money. And our allocation is 862,441, which is great. So we were, you know, thinking we could kind of use that the way we used this year. But we found out last week that the governor has only appropriated 43%, and it's very much restricted. So it's restricted to new summer programming, after-school, before and after-school programs, and credit recovery. So that is different than the 1.3 million that we have this year that we really basically have been able to use to fund our general fund operations. So right off the bat, that 862, we've left with 491,000 that we can use to plug the hole, so to speak. And we, that right now is unappropriated. You know, we're hoping that we get more information on that. So assuming that we can use that 491,000 next year to fund general fund operations, assuming that, and then, right now, the governor's proposing $165 per people increase. That may or may not go through. But if it did, that would bring us in an additional approximately 363,000. So my point is, is right now, we're about $500,000 short federal revenue compared to this year. Now, there's maybe another preparation coming. We, you know, and that's assuming that we get the 165 and assuming that we do get, we have more discretion with how we spend that ESR money, at least the 496. So we're working on that, really paying close attention. The four aspects to the budget development is this federal money right now and federal state revenue. And then, also, as always, our per pupil, our per pupil, or pupil count, I'm sorry, the fall. So we'll be talking, Carl and I, next month. And I know that we talked a little bit last month or in January, what we thought that should be. But we'll have to tie down that assumption before June, obviously. And then, the last, you know, it's here, oh, our investments. So we have our investments right now. So once we get our funding and then per pupil, the federal funding in particular, and then, we're left with, what number do we need to cut? We always, the board has always asked us to bring a balanced budget to you. So that's kind of how we'll back into, okay, we know the federal, we know the state, we know whatever assumption for the count, and then, we're left with that number for reductions. So that's where we're at right now, we're waiting on more information. And we'll be updating you next month and in May and getting your input so that by June, none of this should be a surprise. It should be a really quick presentation in June.
Thank you, no worries, appreciate the foreshadowing so that we can, you know, formulate our thoughts and have everything on our radar heading into it. Yeah, thank you for that, always appreciated. All right. And next on our agenda is the Education Report with Carly.
Intriguing for the word of the night, I'm not sure that goes with state assessments. That's super intriguing. Let me just move this guy here. This goes on a long time, I just want to hit that button, but it didn't, right? It's not perfect, it's not, I don't know. There we go, okay. Wanted to talk about three things this evening, the first of which is state assessments. At this time, we have received word that all students across the district are expected to participate in state standardized assessments this spring. All assessments must be practiced face-to-face. There is no remote action provided by the Michigan Department of Education. So any student that is enrolled in our district, whether it be a summit student, a brand and local home student, or an in-person student, will be expected to participate in the state assessments here in our school buildings. Our brand and local home elementary students, they test in grades three through five, the understep assessment. Me, Dave Wyatt and his team, and myself and our elementary principals are coordinating testing to occur at the ITech Center for our brand and local home elementary teams. Accompanions will also be provided at ITech for students participating in those programs. Our middle and high school students that are part of the brand and local home experience, they will test at their home buildings, the middle and high school. Some important dates to know. April 13th is our SAT and SA Day for our 11th graders. Typically, when the SAT comes out, it's our biggest assessment. It's the first Tuesday right after spring break. And luckily, this year, we have a little bit of grace in which our spring break falls a little earlier. So our students get a chance to catch their breath of coming back from spring break before they test the following week, which is that Tuesday. That is a state mandated day. Everybody across the state of Michigan will be participating in SAT on that day as 11th graders. The freshman students in our district will be taking the PSAT 9 on April 13th. April 14th will be our workies assessment for our 11th graders. And then, our 10th graders will take the PSAT 10. And then, April 20th will be the date that our 11th graders take their science and social studies understep. Our 11th graders are our only grade at the high school that takes that understep. So our 9th, 10th, and 11th graders take a college board suite, which is the SAT and PSAT. At the middle school, the PSAT 8 will occur on the 13th of April. And then, there are windows provided by the state of Michigan in which we can stagger one assessments by practice. So the window for our eighth-grade students to take their other two assessments, which is the Science and Social Studies Assessment, is between April 12th and May 7. And then, April 26th through the 21st of May is when our sixth and seventh graders will take only the ELA and Mathematics Assessment through understep. They do not take the Science and Social Studies assessment. And then, lastly, our elementary students, as I mentioned earlier, are only assessed in grades three through five. The window begins for our fifth graders, and they have all four assessments to take this year. The science assessment has moved to fifth grade, where it had been historically in the fourth grade. So fifth graders will have ELA, Mathematics, Social Studies, and Science. And then, our third and fourth graders will only take ELA and Mathematics during the window of February 26th through May 21st. I can assure you that our administrators are working universally, coordinating the assessments in the buildings, and they will be sure to communicate out. I know the brand and local home schedule is already put together for those families so that they have plenty of time to plan accordingly should their students have to come in, or when their students come in and test. And I have really good news, we have two students left on the WIDA assessment that the assessment started in the beginning of February. That window actually closed, it got extended to April 9th, but we will be done with testing with those last two students, our local home students by the end of this week, which was our original target. So we're very excited about that. Wanted to briefly talk about summer programming. Jan had mentioned the information regarding the ESR funds, so we're digesting that information as to what that means as a school district or what might we be able to do differently this year than maybe we've done in years past to support our students. But one exciting experience that launched last week to our community is what's called the Oakland Youth Innovation Lab, which is running through the county. And it's a very exciting experience for our secondary students just to remain engaged and learning over the summer. This opportunity is open to any sixth through 12th grade student across the district, no matter their excitement, their passion, their interests. It's open to any student, and we encourage all students to apply that wish to participate. The district did allocate so many seats per district, excuse me, the county allocated so many seats per district. We have 25 seats, and we'd love to fill them. The district has committed to providing transportation to students to and forth, back and forth, to the camp, which would be housed at Clarkston High School. Our students will participate along with Clarkston, Polly, Oxford, I believe it's Avondale, and possibly Lake Orion, I can't remember if that was the divide or not. But it's exciting because the students from all across this area are participating and working together. So a reminder for this, we'll go out again later this week with a deadline of next Thursday. I think as long as your students want to participate before spring break, and we can get those names submitted to the county over break for students, and then further information will come their way. We are currently running credit recovery programming at the high school. We're very excited about that. It's an after-school program as well as opportunities throughout the school day for students. But we do expect to continue to offer the online, excuse me, the summer credit recovery program as well. Details for that are evolving, so look forward to hearing more information there. And then, we're also looking at mathematics and ELA program in K8. We do have some plans in the works for August at the elementary level. We just want to be thoughtful, recognizing we have this new information regarding funding that we'll see what tweaks we may need to make if we are able to get access to more funds so that we can do that. So stay tuned on that, we're looking forward to share all that information when we return after spring break, which will be here before we know it. And then, lastly, this evening, I just wanted to let you know that there's been an awful lot of conversation. We will continue to have much more about opportunities to help support our struggling learners as we move into the next school year as a result of the COVID experience for students. You get to meet Derek Muhammad Ali, which we are super excited about. He is going to not only support our AERIS students at the high school level, but also all of our virtual students, K-12. So not just our high school students, we will be helping support all of our students in the virtual settings. We're very excited about having him be a part of that program moving forward to strengthen it. Additional credit recovery opportunities, looking at ways we can continue to expand the support for our struggling students there. And then, also, particularly in the areas of math and ELA. We're looking, what ways can we use resources we currently have? Instead of needing to tap into additional sources, what can we do with the staff we currently have in the programming? We currently have to ensure that we're meeting the needs of all of our students. So that's a conversation, a lot of it's dependent on the funding that Jan had mentioned, too, to see if we're able to stretch ourselves in any way. But if not, we'll be sure to be creative with what we have in-house and immediately lead the students to it. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Carly. Quick question, yeah, how many students, generally speaking, are in need of credit recovery efforts?
That's a great question, and it varies year to year. So obviously, this year particularly is a different year. The only data point I can give you off the top of my head right now is from the parent survey that we gave just a short while ago about how many high school families would be interested in credit recovery over the summer. We have 50 families let us know that they would participate in a credit recovery program that was offered over the summer. So we're using that number to help design what we put together for our students.
Thank you. I just wanted to gauge.
It's the only one I have off the top of my head. There's many more we could look at.
Sure. That's perfect.
And last year, we did not do state assessments, correct, because we were in COVID. So we have one year of no testing. So for some, this is their, the fourth graders, they may have never done this before, correct?
So will there be, will the teachers be kind of open to the platform, UNSTUP platform? How they plan to show them the tools and how to use those? And how do they navigate that?
Yes. Yes, there's lots of, MDU provides some great resources to help teachers do that and get acquainted. So that will definitely be a part of the routine as we get ready to prepare our students for the assessment.
Kim or Melissa, anything at this time? Just don't want you to be forgotten out there. All right. Thank you so much, Carly. Appreciate it as always. Very well done. Informative. All right. Now we're going to move on to our action items on our agenda. And first up, we're looking for a motion for the approval of the Brandon Education Support Personnel Association contract.
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the BESPA contract as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion on this? Dr. Heidrich, do you want to give a quick highlight just for a reminder?
I do appreciate working with the Bespa unit. Very good to work with. We had several meetings and Jan and I were there together. And we're within the board range of parameters that here, the teacher's contracts. So we're very pleased with all the efforts.
Well, thank you. Thank you to you and Jan and all the representatives of Bespa in getting to this point. Very much appreciated. Are there any other questions or further discussion? All right. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith-Kalaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke? Lisa Cabaluna?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of the playground bid. May I have a motion?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the preschool playground bid recommendation from Weekly Associates Incorporated to award the bid to Penchara LLC, Brighton, Michigan, in the amount not to exceed $90,340, as presented. Support.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Jan or Dr. Heidrich, either of you want to remind us of anything on this, or are we good to go?
No, he met, he met all the requirements a little bit and using the equipment that we requested in the RFP.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
Is this the playscape, or is this a whole different area of Harvey Swanson?
It's a fantasy.
Or the fantasy castle?
It's not a fantasy.
It's a fantasy castle we're talking about this.
No, it's not. No. This is a preschool.
Diane, do you want to speak to it?
Yeah, it's in that fenced-in area, the preschool. Oh, that little fence. And so basically, we're taking the two swing steps down, putting up the, and then putting in one, one swing step, and then adding a play structure to the whole thing.
Oh, nice. Okay.
So we're going to keep what we have and then enlarging the sandbox. That's, they could play in the sandbox all day long. Play that kids in that little sandbox at the end. And then adding, I want to say track, so that the trays supposed to go around.
Oh, nice. Okay.
And it'd be accessible then, both the pavilion area and the whole area will be accessible to our students.
Nice. Okay. Thank you.
As a reminder, we'll be funded GSRP 75% and our childcare fund 25%. So nothing will come out of the childcare fund.
Oh, nice. That's even better.
Okay. Any other discussion on this item? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith-Kalaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Lisa Cabaluna?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the bid for the septic field at Harvey Swanson. May I have a motion?
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve septic field replacement bid recommendation from Weekly Incorporated to bid, to award the bid to R and R Earth Movers out of Ortonville, Michigan, in the amount not to exceed $47,780, as presented.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Does anybody need a reminder, or are we good?
I, I just have a question. I would just like to have a reminder on two things. One, why is there such a drastic difference in the two bids? And secondly, I know we have had a discussion where we've had to have possibly placed two of them, correct? So what is the thought process, or why haven't we thought about just going back to bid to having an RFP done for like both of them so that we're not revisiting this and doing this all over again down the road? And being able to, being able to concret or cement costs now rather than cost down the future, as I'm sure they're going to increase. So I just kind of want to have a refresher on those two items, if that's okay.
I can take the question about going out the bid for the additional septic field and the timing of that. So we, we can do that, and we can do that as long as we get the permit to do that through Oakdale County. So it is a timing issue. So initially, over the summer, only one septic tank was built out. However, we know that the other one's in good condition, but it probably needs change in the next few years before it comes into poor condition. So it's on our radar to either work the existing contractor possibly, or even just bid it out again in its separate entity. And so that's something we'll do once we get closer to getting a permit. And hopefully, we can get both projects done in the summer. But it's not, it's a timing issue. We're not certain that we can do that other septic field unless we, it times up correctly. As far as the discrepancy between bids, we're just fortunate enough to have a bid like that. It's, it's complete. It's been reviewed by the architect. There is quite a difference in the bids. However, that was, that was a low bidder, and we are deeming him responsible to complete it within the parameters of his bid.
Okay. Thank you.
And I just happened to notice that this is Ortonville. I don't know if they're cutting off the travel, you know, compared to the other one was Brighton. I don't know if it was Brighton or ways away.
Could have played a role. Yeah, could have played a role in part.
Just pretty drastic. So I just kind of wanted to know what was so drastic. I mean, it's a, it's a pretty hefty, you know, gray between the one, the twos. I just wanted to kind of wonder why, so thank you.
Yeah, good question.
Jeff, do you have a comment?
That was kind of my thought too, was just the difference in price. And there's only two, so there's really not that third comparison.
Right. You don't have a context that's very deep.
I would say certainly no concerns over quality of their work they have done for other septic fields. And according to Mark, they do impeccable work, so.
All words we like to hear. All right. Any other discussion on this item? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith-Kalaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Melissa Clark? Yes. Lisa Cabaluna?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. Our next item is the approval of our new hire, Derek Muhammad Ali. We have a motion.
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve to hire Derek Muhammad Ali as at-risk slash virtual counselor at Brandon High School, as presented. Support.
Any discussion on this? We had a wonderful presentation, so. All right, we'll move on to a roll call vote, please.
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith-Kalaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Lisa Cabaluna?
Yes. Motion passes. Our last action item for this evening is the approval of extended COVID-19 continuity of learning plan. May I have a motion?
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the extended COVID-19 continuity plan, as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? This is our monthly requirement. Okay, then we'll move on to a roll call vote.
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith-Kalaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Lisa Cabaluna, sorry.
Yes. All good. All right. Motion passes. That's it for our action items for this evening. We'll move on to any citizens' input. Maria?
I'm looking. We do not have any citizens' input.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now we are going to, I need a motion to move into closed session for BAA negotiations and superintendent evaluation, please.
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve to enter a closed session for the purpose of BA negotiations and superintendent evaluation.
Support.
Any discussion? We'll move on to a roll call vote, please.
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith-Kalaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Lisa Cabaluna?
Yes, and I understand, Kim and Melissa, that you have a separate.
Like a beginning one.
Okay. All right. So we're moving into closed session, and we'll begin in just a few minutes when we're ready to go with our remote participants.